Well. Perfect. All right, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is 6:03 on August 19th, and I will ask that we stand for the post allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Amendment and approval of the agenda. I have one amendment. We're going to like to pull consent agenda E. And that's appointing Commissioner Coker to the Kuz curry Housing Authority. Apparently, we have some, we need to look into a couple of things within that matter before moving forward with that. Is there any other?
Yeah, I have an item to add, so we can make this a E instead.
Okay.
The USDA AFIS Wildlife Services Contract. This just came across my desk yesterday and wanted to see if there's something to continue on with.
Perfect. So this is for?
Yeah, this is the-
County Trapper.
Yep, County Trapper. So, and with it too, he attached the summary of the previous fiscal year of statistics. Statistics on their trapping in animals and damages that were incurred because of it.
So. Perfect. Any changes?
None.
Commissioner Coker?
We're good.
Okay, well, if that's it, then I will entertain a motion to approve this amended agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? All right, I'll call for the question. Commissioner Coker?
Aye.
Commissioner Hollinger?
Aye.
And I as well. Next, we have presentations and our, we will leave our juvenile director, Christine Neal, to discuss an upcoming event.
Good evening. Let me check, make sure everybody can hear me. I am Christine Neal with the Curry County Juvenile Department. I am the director and I would like to introduce our prevention specialist, Brittany Felton, to talk about this wonderful community event that she has brought to us.
Perfect. Welcome.
Hopefully you guys can hear me because this is-
Yeah, so what, you actually like goes karaoke style? Yes.
I don't like karaoke, just so you know. So, good evening, my name is Brittany Felton. I am the Prevention Specialist Coordinator for Curry County Prevention housed within the Curry County Juvenile Department. Our department covers prevention and education on alcohol, tobacco, other drugs, problem gambling for both adults and youth in our community. I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for inviting myself to speak regarding an amazing event that we are holding in Curry County on September 9th from 1:30 to 3:30 PM. With our Prevention State funding, we have been able to hire Jermaine Galloway, also known as Tall Cop Says Stop, to come to Curry County to speak with our community. This event is perfect for parents, grandparents, and the adult community. This presentation will include a community assessment, so he's going to go out to Curry County retailers, see what they're selling. It's also going to include a high and plain sight presentation, which will cover topics such as drug trends, non-traditional alcoholic beverages, inhalants, opioid trends, youth party tendencies, new marijuana products, convenience store products that can be a danger, and more. Tall Cop Says Stop was created by Officer Jermaine Galloway, an Idaho law enforcement officer since 1997, regarded as one of America's top experts in various drug and alcohol trends. He has specialized in underage drinking and drug enforcement for more than 15 years. Since 2009, Officer Galloway has won four national awards and one international award for his work. In addition to his numerous talks and conference on other events, he has personally trained more than 825,000 people nationwide. Jermaine Galloway states, "I've seen the ever-evolving drug culture trends sweep across our country. For many people, it's hard to keep up with these trends and especially to understand what they all mean. Unless you understand the culture, you won't see it at all. All over our nation, communities struggle to deal with underage drinking and drug usage. What can we do about these issues? Are you going to meet up and roundtable with them every month? Or are we going to get out there and do something to fix the problems? That's where Tall Cop Says Stop comes in. Through education, prevention, and enforcement, his presentations address underage drinking and drug problems and empower you to detect these problems and fight them within your own community. Everyday items that might not take a second look at will take on a new meeting once you learn about the drug culture. Officer Galloway's many years of experience have taught him one thing above all else. In his words, 'You can't stop what you don't know.' This event will be held on Tuesday, September 9th, 2025, from 1:30 to 3:30 PM at the Gold Beach Junior or Senior High School. Please pre-register for this free event using the QR code or a link on the flyers. The first 50 to register will get a free water bottle and also entry to rent a free raffle giveaway. You can find more information on this amazing event on our website, curricanyprevention.com, or our Facebook page, Curri County Prevention. We have additional events coming up, which include a community event that we co-host every three months called Suds on the Coast, which is a Substance Use Disorder Services in Curry County. In these meetings, we discuss resources available, gaps in those resources, and take action items to alleviate those gaps. This is open to the community, and we encourage anyone to attend to learn about the difference we are making. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, August 21st, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the Checko Community Public Library in Brookings. We also are having another prescription take back. We're calling it Coffee Break, so if you guys like coffee, please come down. We're going to be in Gold Beach, where the old Pit Stop Java is, is now going to be Cosmic Grinds. She's going to offer 50% off any drink on the menu during our event, and it's going to be on Tuesday, August 26th, from 2025, from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM. Help us get old or unused medications out of your homes and dispose of them properly. And we will also have sharp containers available and how to order them straight to your house, as well as inhaler disposals. So, thank you for the, from the community's support, and we hope you attend our amazing events.
Thank you, Brittany. So, one, one quick thing, just to reiterate.
Yes.
The Tall Cop event will be September 9th.
Yes.
1:00 to 3:30 at the Gold Beach High School.
Uh, 1:30 to 3:30.
1:30 to 3:30.
Yes.
Perfect. And the prescription take back will be August 26th?
Yes.
At?
Cosmic Grind, formerly Pit Stop Java, from 12 to 3:00 PM.
Okay, perfect. And so, one thing, a lot of, does not get discussed enough in our county is that we have, we have an extraordinary amount of youth who are raised by their grandparents. One of the largest percentage of youth being raised by their grandparents in the state of Oregon. And I mean, it coincides the fact that we are the oldest per capita county in Oregon as well. And what a lot of times, what comes along with that is it's hard enough to keep up with the trends, and when you are in a scenario where you're, where you're raising your grandchildren, you may even be just a little bit further removed from those trends. And your medicine cabinet may have a little more in it as well, which is what I know when I was director, we, we found a lot of scenarios where youth were taking those medications to school and selling them and et cetera. And so, a lot of times, we don't, we don't really quite understand. And I would highly suggest for any parent, no matter your, your age, to go to this, to get caught up on what the trends are. You know, what's, what are kids into? What are some of the signs and symptoms to pay attention to with your children as they, as they come home on a daily basis? So anyways, thank you for bringing this to the community.
I'll give you guys each a flyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
QR code, and the other one apparently stopped working.
Perfect.
Thank you very much, Brittany.
And thank you. Quick question. How many, how many, how many kids do we currently have in prevention?
Just in prevention?
Just in prevention.
Um, right now, we are a little slim on prevention cases, only because we currently only have one full-time juvenile probation officer and myself having a part-time caseload. So, I believe we have, I think, seven in prevention. But we do refer out to the RAP program with Adapt as well, and in the last three months, I think I've done at least five RAP referrals.
Sure. And I think, so, a couple of things, misnomers, that a lot of times, I think, can be construed out in the community. A lot of times, when people think juvenile probation and prevention, it's this kind of scary, it's a scary idea. And one of the things, I think that it's really important that the community understands is that we have a very in-depth prevention program that is not in any way punitive, but 100% supportive. If it's about getting youth connected with services, even just, you know, mentoring level services, there's, there's, there's an avenue, and it's, it is voluntary. And it is, you know, it is one of those things where it's a service that is out there that you just have to reach out for and ask for some assistance with, and there is no, there is no shame in asking for some assistance.
Absolutely not. And I assume that with schools starting back up in the next couple of weeks, we'll have more prevention referrals, because the school is basically where we get all those from.
Sure, sure. But a parent can also seek your services, correct?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Parents, community members, anyone that is involved with a youth's life, they can call us up and ask for information, and we can get them the referral.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else you want to add?
I don't think so. Thank you for having us tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Appreciate it. Okay. Next is the United States Navy Sea Cadets Program Presentation. For those of you who are not, who haven't been keeping up on this discussion item, this is, Commissioner Coker has been working with this, with the Navy in trying to bring a sea cadet program to, to Curry County, and we are now in the midst of getting real.
We are. And let me just do a reality check here. Can, can you see and or hear me on the other end in Washington DC?
Yes, I can. This is Captain Kent. I can hear and read you.
Hi, Captain, good to see you. Let me quickly introduce you, and we'll launch this into a wonderful presentation, I'm sure. So, Captain Kent is the Strategic Growth Director with the Sea Cadets, serving, she's retired captain, but serving as their director for the US Navy Sea Cadet Program. We have a couple of those expressions here in Oregon already, and we're hoping that over a period of time, we'll be able to garner some excitement here in town, so that families will support this effort. They will see the, the career value associated with this in terms of the long-term window, but they'll also see near-term, the value that comes by these, the children, and they're between 13 and 17 years old, the value that this kind of program can bring to their life and give them ideas about if they want to stay here along the coast, there's a rich oceanic series of professions that they can get into, but also they can leverage this training if they want to leave this area and find professional assignments elsewhere. And so, with that, I want to thank you very much, Captain, for joining us, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. And first, I would like to acknowledge that I have some others from my Sea Cadet team on board. And we have the Area Commander Verhan Negan, who will also help with this effort. And then one of the local volunteers, actually, she's about five hours away. Miss Heather is on, on the line also, and I believe possibly a regional director. I believe I have access to share a short presentation. I will attempt to do that.
By the way, thank you so much. I know the time difference over there, it's, it's fairly late where you are, and so I appreciate you being able to work with us around that.
Oh, no worries at all. No worries. And I will, I will run through this real quickly. I would really love to give more opportunity to answer any specific questions you have, and definitely give our volunteers, within the time allotted, some opportunity to speak further about the program. And but to set the framework of Sea Cadets, who we are, what we do, it all starts with our mission, which is to build leaders of character. So, everything we do is about, is focused on that. We are maritime-focused, congressionally mandated to be maritime-focused. So, that means when we're thinking of programming, which will be important in Curry County, our focus is on skill sets, on the vocations necessary for the Navy, the post guard, the Marine Corps, the merchant marines, and shipbuilders. So, that actually gives us a wide range of topics to work with young people in, but any career field from culinary and photography, to pipe fitting, welding, to seamanship, of course, and beyond. We want to, in some way, during a cadet's time in Sea Cadets, at least make them aware of those opportunities. And we focus on that by a commitment to country, by a commitment to the community, making sure our cadets understand the importance of service in uniform and out of uniform, that even if you decide you're not going to wear the uniform of our country, you can still provide meaningful service to your community, and that is what's needed with our leaders of character. And then, of course, the career exploration. Love the idea of our cadets coming, and when I ask them a question, you know, what do you want to do? And I'm okay with the cadet that says, "I want to be a pilot," but I'm also okay with the cadet who says, "I have absolutely no idea." This program is for both of them, because we want them to explore. If they think they know what they want to do, we want them to be able to make that informed decision. And if they have no idea, we want them to challenge themselves and find out what they may have that aptitude for, that passion for, and what they're willing to work for. And so, what does success look like in our program? Our success is when our cadets are willing to do challenging things. When I talk to cadets, I say, "If it's not illegal or immoral, I want you to do hard things." And we want them to have that self-confidence as they're trying these different things. We want them to be a leader of themselves, because you have to be able to lead yourself before you can lead others, and then we want them to understand what it means to lead others and to lead others responsibly and with character, and then all of that wrapped up into discipline. So, who are we? We serve youth grades five through 12, that equates to beginning at age 10. Our cadets wear US Navy uniforms. You know, they're tailored down, so, but the discipline comes and the pride comes from recognizing that they are wearing the same uniforms as people who serve our country. And so, we teach them to wear it with pride. We teach them attention to detail as they're wearing the uniform and all of the parts that go with that, and also the confidence that comes with it. The unit, if you think about it, in kind of two programs, during the school year, they meet 12 hours a month. For many units, that looks like one Saturday and one Sunday a month, so one week and a month, six hours each day. For some units, that may be two Saturdays or two Sundays a month. And for a handful of our units, that will be one day a week for a few hours each day. I mean, I'm sorry, one day, oh, one day each week for a few hours each week. Our focus is on experiential learning and being hands-on. And so, during our unit drills, that's what we call those 12 hours a month, they are, you know, they have classroom time, but we also want them to get out in the community and experience teamwork, experience that learning of the different skill sets. And then during the summer, they are no longer working as that local unit. They have the opportunity to go to our summer and winter trainings, and those are more specialized in specific training topics. And so, for instance, during the school year, a unit drill may mean that, you know, for 12 hours, everyone for that weekend is going to do a little bit of first aid, they're going to have their classroom training on preventing sexual harassment, they're going to have proper wear of the uniform and maybe military drill and working on color guard and, and understanding the history of the color guard and how that works. But then during the summer, the cadets as individuals get to work with their chain of command and their family and decide what five to 14-day training, advanced training that they would do. So, if they loved it when the unit did first aid training, and that the unit, they only did it one month out of the nine months during the school year, during the summer, they can do a whole week of first aid. And then later in the summer, they can do a whole week of construction, working with sea beasts or things. We offer trainings all over the country. I emphasize that this is a program about building leaders of character, and while a good percentage of our cadets will go into a military-adjacent field, we are just as proud as our, of our cadets who go directly into the workforce or go into education and pursuing their education, because we know that we have equipped them, again, back to what I said, what the success looked like, that we gave them the opportunity to do hard things, to challenge themselves, to develop that self-confidence so that they can succeed in whatever career field they, they have. So, we spoke with Commissioner, one of the things we discussed are, what are the requirements for having a unit in your community? First, I'll let you know that we do have five units in Oregon, in North Bend, in McMinnville, in Roseburg, in Florence, and in White City. Our, each unit needs prospective cadets, and that's something that we would work with the community to see, is there an interest in your, this age demographic of from fifth grade on up, of 25 youth is the goal for a unit, is to get to that. Now, of course, we don't expect to start with that. We will start with as few of that five cadets and build it as the unit becomes part of the community. We need adult volunteers, male and female adult volunteers who have military background or who don't have a military background, basically who have a passion for working with kids and helping them to develop and learn different skill sets. And we provide that training for the adults, some of it's online and some of it's in person. And our key is, we want to have three to four adults signed up that we can start training before we actually recruit heavily for cadets. Meeting space, which looks different with every unit, that is, what we like to have is two to three classrooms that the cadets would have access to, plus storage space for all of the uniforms and supplies that a unit would, would accumulate over time. That meeting space is typically the first thing that we work on with the community, the meeting space and the community sponsor, because as you recruit adults and cadets, they want to know what, where is home? You know, where, where will we be spending a lot of our time? And that is usually in the meeting space. And that meeting space, and to give you an idea, some units have met in schools, some, we've got one unit that meets in City Hall. We have units that meet at community centers, on college campuses, on military installations, firehouses, at veteran service organizations, so like at the VFW Lodge, American Legion Post. So, it's a wide variety of where our cadets would meet, and we call our meetings drills. And then the community sponsor, the community sponsor is typically a nonprofit, maybe the Navy League, maybe the VFW, American Legion, some other organization that just keeps the unit connected to the community, helps those volunteers reach into the community to provide opportunities for the cadets, and when they have the capacity, be able to help either financially support the unit or to provide the guidance as units do fundraising activities. So, we need to just give you a realistic idea of the program costs. For our cadets, that's under where you see participant costs, the, our enrollment fee is $125 for the cadets. The cadets will then, over the time that they're in the program, usually over the first year, they would accumulate their uniforms, which we call the C-bag, and that can range between $200 and our high end, we say, is about $715. And the reason why that is a variable is because we do have some, in some places, surplus uniforms that are, that are provided to us, and we're able to get those either at a discount or get those free to cadets, and that would decrease the cost of participating in the program. And then the advanced training I mentioned, which is usually during a winter break or summer break, those typically run about $300 for the week, plus the cost of transportation. So, that is quite a value for an overnight training. I will add that for our younger cadets, start ages 10 to 13, there is no requirement to do anything overnight in this program. But once our cadets are older, in order to progress in the program, they will need to participate in these advanced trainings. That's how they get the most out of the program, is that concentrated skills development. Now, for the unit itself, the parents may divide up the fees for the unit, or the unit's sponsor may pay for these, or a donor may pay for these. And that would include, if there's no place for storage, the cost to get storage, and the cost of the activities that the unit may participate in, if there's a cost to that, if there's a transportation cost, for instance, the unit is not carpooling or things, the admin supplies, and then eventually the, the color guard equipment, which is something that on most units, we don't even worry about in year one, because we, the cadets are just learning how to wear the uniform, learning themselves, learning the program. And the ability to properly present the colors is a more advanced skill. And so, briefly, for next steps, it would be to identify four prospective volunteers who are willing to be trained as unit leadership, and those volunteers would work with me and the other Sea Cadet personnel who are on the call tonight, and we would get them trained to start, to start the unit. And then, once we, they are on a good track, we would have an open house to assess the interest level of the youth in the area. We recommend a next step of identifying what would be that appropriate drill facility, that meeting location, and what are our storage options. For able to find a location, a drill facility that has storage on-site at no cost to the unit, that dramatically decreases the cost of participating in the unit. Determine unit funding model, and what I mean by that is, based on the demographics of the county and based on what support the community sponsor is able to provide, is this a unit that the parents would pay for the majority of, of everything, the kind of, like if you were joining the Socrates, you know, the parents write a check to join the Socrates? Or is this a unit where a donor, a community sponsor, a municipality says, "We are going to fund a certain portion of the participation in this unit?" There's a wide range of different funding models, and I have examples from different communities across the country on how that can be done. And again, the community sponsor, whether that be a nonprofit such as the Navy League or American Legion, or a, even a business. So, with that, I would like to, sorry, stop, and if we still have time to take questions, we have some very much more knowledgeable people than I on the line, the regional directors and the area commander, who will, can assist with answering your questions.
Well, we would like to hear from one of the, the regional people, that'd be great, if they could introduce themselves and maybe just describe what- if they could introduce themselves and maybe just describe what what it is that they do to make the program great where they are.
Well, good evening. Uh my name is Valhan Manugian, I'm the area commander for the Pacific Southwest, uh which encompasses pretty much the western uh seaboard, uh California, Nevada, and Hawaii. And of course, we're the closest uh leadership uh for Curry County. And so we're, you know, we're excited to be able to expand up into the Oregon area. Uh like uh like Captain Kent, I am a retired Navy uh corpsman with uh twenty-five years, uh mostly with the Marine Corps, uh but I've been with the Sea Cadet Program for twenty-seven years, and nineteen of those were as a volunteer, uh and then I joined the headquarters staff. So my area of responsibility is really to be the uh representative of our national headquarters out here on the West Coast. But what I would like to do, if she's still on the line, is introduce Heather Van Horn, who's our regional director, uh based out of Shasta, California. And she's been a longtime volunteer with us, has had uh her children go through the program, and I think could give you a great perspective, uh not only that of volunteer, but also as a parent. So Heather, I'm gonna turn it over to you, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. Good evening. Uh I'm sorry, I can't turn my video on, I don't have enough Wi-Fi at home. Uh but I've been with the program for about nine years now. Uh both of my boys have participated, and that's really what brought me into the program. Uh but what keeps me with the program is the amazing benefit that I see in that all of our cadets who graduate out of the program have a very clear plan for what they intend to do after um high school, whether that be, you know, college, we have one at the Naval Academy currently, we have uh several that have enlisted, my oldest son is in the Coast Guard. Uh we have one who never thought he wanted to work on a submarine, but his mom, who's a volunteer, thought, let's go to Hawaii, and uh you go to submarine training, and he's actually in the Navy Nuclear Subprogram now. So I I think it's really the the opportunities that they see that they may never have even considered, uh as well as those cadets who think they have a plan and they go to a couple of advanced trainings and decide that's really not for them. It really does help shape their their future engagement. Um but yeah, the growth that you see in these cadets is is truly amazing and just a long-term benefit when they come back. Um I was the CO for a local division here, um and then I just recently moved into the area or the regional director position. And um yeah, happy to support however I can. I've got lots of knowledge with fundraising, finding sponsors, uh finding drill locations, all of that.
Well, thank you very much, Heather. I think we're gonna become uh great friends. I appreciate you joining us tonight. And Angel, I saw you come online.
I'm Angel Uskandam, the regional director for the state of Oregon. Uh I've been in the program since nineteen ninety-five as a cadet and as an adult volunteer. Uh I can personally tell you at from experience as a cadet, this is a great program, uh and you can't ask anything less, you know, uh is great for kids, is good for, you know, um experience and knowledge and uh and opportunities that it gives to the cadets and uh get them out of the comfort zone as well. Um is, I go, my daughter's in the program now, I I'm, like I said, I've been in the program for a hot minute, but uh I I try to try to get uh involved with our adult leaders and and then give them the experience they need to run their own unit and um and help uh each other out, because we're uh the main goal is to give the opportunity to our cadets and uh give them the experience they they thought they could never get and 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 help them on the path of their career they want to do.
Well, thank you very much, Angel. I think our next steps are going to be to circle the wagon with some of our community members and our county leaders and calculate through maybe a workshop venue, how best to begin to target groups that could serve in the sponsorship role, could serve as volunteers, uh being being able to meet both with civic and religious and commercial organizations in search of a property that might serve us well, uh somewhere within the three incorporated areas that we have in Curry County. So we've got the lion's share of work in front of us, uh and I'm so grateful that you were able to join us. Uh my brother's here on the commission, any questions for this wonderful crew?
No, thank you all for your time. Obviously, this is something that would be incredibly advantageous to have for our community. I think uh like Commissioner Coker mentioned, I it's uh it's gonna be about circling the wagons, and obviously, as I'm sure you would attest, the strength of the program is built on the volunteers in which to help facilitate the program and um you know, we do have an an incredible community that wraps around and 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 volunteers for for so many different avenues um regarding youth and and I so I I I think we'll we'll probably be pretty successful in finding people willing to uh to take on the challenge, it's just the other logistical pieces to make sure it all comes together. We want to make sure we do it right.
Uh yeah, we, being a coastal community, there are uh several gener- not only generational families, but even transplant families that take quite an interest in maritime activities here. We have a a large uh fishing economy, we have tourism, we have, you know, with with the jet boats up and down the river, or whale watching, or also fishing. Um so there's there's a lot of interest in the youth for, you know, being on the water and and performing maritime activities. So I think that this would be a great item for here. Um my my question, and you might have already explained this, but just to to clarify again, for those who do know that going the military route wouldn't be for them, but more of the merchant mariner role, you know, I kind of see that, you know, in the ten to thirteen-year-old um division, it's more just introducing them really to maritime and work on on teamwork and and maybe some some traditions. And then, as you advance and get a little bit uh older into the older programs, it it shifts more into a a military focus? So it, my guess, my my question then would at what point is there more of a focus on just the merchant mariner side compared to just the military side?
Um so I I will start, and then um ma- maybe someone may need to jump in. Um I would say that there's not one focus where it's skewed to one of the maritime services. What I would say is, we start first by what's in the local community, exposing, because there are some things that are common amongst Navy, Marine Corps, Coast Guard, shipbuilders, and merchant Marines. And we find those skill sets for those during the school year to introduce them to those terms, like, I mean, just working with the first responders and whether it's firefighting first aid, that's gonna be common regardless. And then we work on what would be considered age-appropriate for merchant marines. So if we're expo- um talking about what, you know, what do the merchant Marines do? What are options for merchant Marines? What are the different um levels and rates and skill sets that they have? Um that conversation looks different for, of course, for the ten to thirteen-year-olds than it does for when they uh pass fourteen and fifteen, because at, you know, fifteen and sixteen, they are at the point where they can actually go to some of our advanced trainings and get certain certifications that they'll be able to use to apply for those positions. So it's really um introducing them to it during that school year time, and then if they want to focus on something, that's when they do the summer or winter advanced trainings, because they choose which um one of those trainings and what subject matter they do. If I could quickly add another point, it's also, I think it's just as important for that eleven-year-old to that you're introducing their parents and caregivers to these career fields, because some may come and say, hey, I'm putting my child in Sea Cadets, because I want them to go to the Naval Academy. And that child may want to be a welder, and that child may start welding at a Sea Cadet training with cheese whiz and graham crackers. And then during the summer, as they get older, take an actual course where they are welding and they're suited up. But until the parents see that progression, the parents may not think of that as a viable path for their child. And so Sea Cadets not only exposes the youth to what is viable and meaningful and important to um service of our nation, but also the parents to the many different ways that service looks.
Ab- absolutely, and I would springboard off of that and say that uh basic seamanship, we we provide training at all levels, so starting from the time they're ten, they can attend sailing training, uh but they also would be expected to have some basic line-handling skills. Uh and they might do s- a small engine repair or STEM robotics training, uh even at the age of ten, as opposed to waiting until they turn thirteen. So they are being exposed to things that would be of benefit to them in a merchant marine fa- um aspect, as well as any of the military options. Uh so as Thoreau was saying, it's it's important for us to start them young, um making it age-appropriate and tailoring it, but also then helping them expand on that knowledge as they progress through the program.
And I'm gonna springboard on what Heather just mentioned, uh because one of the questions alluded to the military aspect of the training. So the military discipline and the pride of wearing the uniform and being part of a larger group, that starts from the minute they join the program, whether they join at ten or they join at sixteen. Uh and we start instilling those values into them through our code of conduct, uh through the drills that they participate in, through community service. Uh we begin to plant that seed that even though you are the participant in Sea Cadets, the program and what it can offer you and the people around you is really certainly bigger than you are, uh and you fit into a larger picture. And that has no age barriers to it.
Okay, thank you for the clarifications. Appreciate it.
I think we're ready to move on, so thank you very much for whether you're on the East Coast or the West Coast, depending on how much you invested here, we are grateful. You have a good evening.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
So I'm actually a merchant mariner. I will be renewing my certifications again this next year, it'll be twenty years.
I'm gonna put your name at the top of the volunteer light.
First volunteer.
Yeah, thank you, Pat.
Okay, I will never let that license expire, it was extremely difficult to get.
Wow.
So, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you for bringing that to our meeting and hope we can get that lifted up. Okay, next up, we have public comment, and we have one public comment tonight. I will uh I will go over the quick rules, comments are limited to three minutes unless extended by the chair, we may not donate time to others. The board is not obligated to respond to any public comments. Speakers shall conduct themselves with respect. The chair reserves the right to declare any comment containing profanity, abusive, threatening, or slanderous content as out of order. The public comment section of the agenda is an item designated for any member of the public who wishes to speak on any issue related to Curry County. Please be advised that the comments that are made by these individuals reflect their personal opinions and not have been verified factually. Comments directed towards county personnel will not be tolerated. In this forum, we encourage anyone with personnel-related concerns to address them privately with any of us after the meeting. And we have one comment card tonight, and it is Georgia Cockerham.
Georgia Cockerham, excuse me, Curry County citizen, Brookings. This isn't about Commissioner Hollinger's personal dislike of Sheriff John Ward, and it isn't about the sheriff's office. This is about Commissioner Hollinger's refusal to be accountable for and transparent about his blatant accusation against a Curry County citizen employed as a sheriff's office marine deputy, falsely accusing the deputy of intentionally trying to deceive the Oregon State Marine Board. Commissioner Hollinger has, each time I've spoken up about this demeaning accusation, attempted to evade the truth. He has stated that he doesn't believe he said anything wrong, and at the August sixth public meeting, he attempted to evade responsibility by twisting his own original words. He stated, and I quote, "It was claimed I don't have any evidence that my claims against the deputy were fraudulent," unquote. Commissioner Hollinger, either you are not good at listening, or you made a deliberate effort to deceive the public. If other speakers have reported that your claims against the deputy were fraudulent, I'm not here to deny that. My talks have given attention to the fact that you used the word fraudulent when describing the deputy's reports to the Marine Board. You have over and over denied the truth. Therefore, I ask you to please listen carefully. This is a brief recording of your words after completing your reading of the Marine Board's letter.
They're fraudulent reports. Um that doesn't sit well with me. Does that sit well with you guys?
Those were fraudulent reports, those were your words. At the last meeting, you stated that you have evidence to support your accusation that the marine deputy submitted fraudulent reports. I am here today to tell the public that you do not. I challenge you, Commissioner Hollinger, to reveal to the public what specific evidence you have that the deputy against whom you used your public position to harm is guilty of committing fraud when submitting the reports to the Marine Board. And you, Commissioner Hollinger, are going down a slippery slope. You are using your political position to demean and falsely accuse a citizen of this county. And Commissioners Trosse and Coker, by your silence, you are also avoiding accountability.
Okay, next is Commissioner comments? Commissioner Coker?
Um, no comments until we get to the uh closing of the meeting, when we have the opportunity to introduce some items. I do have some other things I wanted to approach the board with.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hollinger?
Uh, no. Not at this time?
Uh, I either do I. Okay, next up is the consent agenda.
I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I so move.
And I will second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Commissioner Coker?
Aye.
Commissioner Hollinger?
Aye.
And I as well. Next is, uh we have a public hearing, the annexation of Rural Fire Protection District. This is a public hearing before the Board of Commissioners conducted pursuant to ORS one nine eight, dot eight five seven, annexation without election by petition of landowner. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
I so move.
Can I have a second? I have a second. Uh, I, we will, we will call for that question to open the meeting. Commissioner Coker?
Aye.
Commissioner Hollinger?
Aye.
I as well. The hearing is now open at six fifty-two on eight nineteen, uh twenty twenty-five. We have two annexations into the fire protection districts, uh twenty-five dash oh nine, owner is Hunter into the Pistol River Fire Protection District, and twenty-five dash ten, owner is Prosser into the Pistol River Fire District. Do any of the owners wish to speak? Hearing none? Do we have any other public comments? Okay, then I will entertain a-
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to a, to approve these two annexations.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the petition for annexation, um, number twenty-five dash zero nine.
Second.
Call for the question. Commissioner Coker?
Aye.
Commissioner Hollinger?
Aye.
And I as well.
And then I'll also make a motion to approve the petition for annexation for number twenty-five dash ten.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, call for the question. Commissioner Coker?
Aye.
Commissioner Hollinger?
Aye.
And I as well. The hearing is now closed at six fifty-three on eight nineteen, twenty twenty-five.
And congratulations.
Um, okay, next up, this is a pretty, pretty, pretty small meeting here. Uh, we have no discussion action items. Um, public safety update, I do not see anybody here to provide public safety update. Thank you. Um, next, Director of County, um, operations update. I, I don't believe that uh we have anything to bring forward to update there. That we won't be discussing later in the meeting. Elected officials update, I do not see any elected officials here to provide an update. So we are right into Commissioner update. And Commissioner Hollinger, you are first on the list.
Uh, you know, I, I really don't have any updates for this meeting. So I will yield back.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Coker?
Yes, thank you very much. So the first thing I wanted to bring up is a kind of a early notice about an October thirtieth courthouse training drill that's going to be initiated. It's the Run, Hide, Fight uh effort on the part of our COO's, Curry State Courts, and their administrative support to prepare various elements of the county for those kinds of events that would require uh that sort of urgent reaction and response to a situation as it unfolds on the premise. So it's called Run, Hide, Fight, uh, it'll be on ten thirty. With that said, for others who aren't going to be there for the actual drill itself, there's a run-through the day before, they call it a tabletop exercise, and it's going to be done at noon, and that's also available. The reason I want to bring these up is that I've, I've gone back to the administrative agencies of the courts, and I've asked them, I've said, that's a really wonderful thing to be thinking about in terms of the courthouse itself, and they fold into that, of course, any of our offices that are over there into their training program. But I've asked them if they could, if they would consider extending that training to other of our county properties, so that each of us had an opportunity to see what we're supposed to do in some kind of unfolding urgent situation. And I haven't heard back from them, but I was going to just give you an address to that, and if you have comments on that, you can uh ring me up or get Ted involved, and we'll figure out how best to move or not to move in that direction. But I have put the question before the agency of the courts. The second thing I wanted to bring up, it's been a, a really active time from the Lipsec Group, uh, that's a local public safety uh
Coordinating Council.
Coordinating Council. The uh, we had an opportunity to go after a grant uh under, that was offered uh by the behavioral uh, the actual title was Behavioral Health Deflection Program. Uh, it was a, it was an opportunity to nail down some funding from the state. The, the difficulty was that if we took a dollar from them, or if we took a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from them, along with that would be a requirement to perform. And that's great, we're prepared to give a dollar if that's what we're, we're prepared to buy a dollar's worth of services if that's what we're giving, or if we're given a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're prepared to deliver a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of services. But the funny part about this grant is that there's an unfunded mandate. So along with the things that we have to do in order to justify getting state money, along with getting that state money, we get this huge, huge amount of other work that has to be done, that's paid for out of resources that the county is supposed to provide, whether it's money, whether it's equipment, whether it's tools, whether it's um computers, that's, that's the obligation that rests on our feet in order to perform against the criteria of the grants. So at least for now, our, our Lipsec or uh council has decided that we're not going to go after that deflection grant, but rather, we all felt like we're really into this deflection consideration. Deflection is where on low-level offenders, we have an opportunity even before they are taken to the jail, even before they're booked, maybe even before they're arrested, they have an opportunity to be deflected from the criminal justice system into a behavioral health pattern or system. And we thought that was very intriguing. Uh, I've had years of personal experience with that uh in other places. I understand the power that that can bring uh to the families, to the offenders, it's just a magnificent opportunity. And so the, the Lipsec Commission, they said, we are going to form a sub-working group, and we're going to see if we can create a bootstrap approach, a Curry County version of a deflection undertaking. And that has been set in motion, we're polling uh through the Sheriff's Organization, we're uh polling different organizations, looking for volunteers to serve on the steering committee that would be a part of defining the roadmap forward, and I'll keep you posted relative to how that unfolds. But it's a, an exciting undertaking, and I think it can bring significant added value to our approach for handling uh the, the TLC associated with rehabilitation as opposed to simply incarceration. So thank you for that opportunity.
Anything else?
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Easy night.
Yeah, it is. Um, so one thing I will bring back to this commission's attention is that um several years ago, approximately four years ago, in fact, um, this, the commission at the time uh handed over the local mental health authority and the local public health authority back to the state. We are only one of two counties in the state of Oregon who have done so. Um, however, uh, it was a four-year agreement in making that decision. So it is something that we need to begin considering, or we have the opportunity to begin considering retaining the local mental health authority and the local public health authority back within the county. And so I did meet with our um, our public health representative from Oregon Health Authority, and they are currently working on trying to find a provider in our community. They've had struggles trying to find providers or keep providers, providing public, public health services. Um, they did just hire somebody to take over environmental inspections, which has been lacking for a couple of years in Curry. Uh, we haven't had real um active environmental inspections, and for people who don't know what that means, it's, it's inspecting um restaurants, kitchens uh for uh, for all of the required practices, um, public pools, whether it's in a hotel or, or our actual public pools, um, and those types of inspections. So at any rate, uh, they did just hire somebody to, to take that over, which is nice, um, and they should be starting soon. However, they, I think it is important that we start having on the front of our minds the discussions whether or not we want to look at pursuing, taking back uh the local mental health authority or the local public health authority. And with that, it does not mean that we have to take back the ability to provide the service. It just means you would take back the authority to oversee the services being provided. So.
It's two very different things.
Yes, yes, two very, very different things.
Very different things.
So.
What a great, what a great uh new wrinkle in the possibility of delivering those services.
Well, delivering is a different ballgame, right? Because find the, we have to find the, the organizations willing to do so.
So that would fall into our lap then if we took back authority, we would be the ones outsourcing or trying to find
Well, you work with the
Service provider.
Somewhat, right? So we work with the COOs, the, the uh, community care organizers, the CCOs, sorry, CCOs, um, which in our area is all care and advanced health. And they are also, uh, they work in tandem to help provide or find um uh organizations to provide service, but yes, but ultimately, it would be an agreement that we would, we would have with them to provide the service.
So, so currently now, it's the CCOs, well, not the CCO, but who they outsource to, the CCO outsources to would be Adapt, is that for our?
No.
So how does Adapt play into that?
So.
I'm just, I'm not familiar with this.
Okay.
At all.
So when we handed back the local mental health authority and local public health authority, we handed it back to Oregon Health Authority. Oregon Health Authority still retains the public health authority, and they've contracted services out to different entities over time, but Coastal, they're now looking for a couple of others that potentially take on, they've retracted, I believe, some of the current contracts they have, and they're looking for folks to be able to do that. Oregon Health Authority gave the local mental health authority to Adapt.
Okay, so they're just mental health authority.
Behavioral health.
Okay, behavioral health, okay.
But the weird, the kind of the unique, the uniqueness in that is that they are not just the provider, but they are also the, the authority. So they over, so they have the authority to oversee themselves. There's no entity overseeing the services being provided by Adapt for behavioral health, which is a, unique is a really, is, is probably the word to use, it's circumstance.
Okay.
So Oregon Health Authority handed over the local mental health authority to the provider, which is not typical.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, so, uh, with that, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that, you can kind of just get it, your wheels spinning on, on that. I do want to give a quick update on the workshop that we had with the City of Brookings regarding uh, regarding a potential agreement to provide some public safety, uh, some additional public safety services in, in, in the South County area. So there were some agreements that we'd be providing some, some information that they needed, some data that they would need to provide the, the services or to come up with a estimate on how much it would cost the county to provide those services. And just to be clear, what we were talking about was providing patrol services um to the, initially, we were discussing about the urban growth boundary, so basically just the area around, surrounding the Brookings area from harbor, a little upriver, right? Our more populated areas. Um, which I think ended up condensing down to more about the, the harbor bench. At any rate, they'd asked for data, uh, the sheriff said would provide, um, the sheriff didn't come to the meeting nor provide the information, so the city did not feel that they had enough information or data to
And I was at the first workshop when the sheriff was there, and he said he was going to provide the data.
Correct.
And he didn't show, and he didn't provide them the data.
Correct. Um, and so understandably, the City of Brookings, the leadership there said, it's going to be very difficult to move forward without the data, we need, data drives our decisions, um, and we, we need the data to be able to uh consider what this would look like. So that was kind of pressed down on hold. Um, I will say one thing that came out of that that was, uh, as I view fairly positive, was the discussion of having a, an agreement uh to partner with the City of Brookings to provide um community resource officer uh services to that area, CRO, um, to assist with the transient uh issues that are occurring on um the other side of the, the bridge. And I imagine some upriver, so that was a positive discussion. Uh, I believe both parties are definitely working towards that. I, at last, when we left it, um, the city manager and our county administrator, we're, our county director, we're going to uh start working on uh what that agreement would look like so that we can have something in front of us in the near future. We would be using opioid funds to uh help, to, to fund that uh, that, that service in the area, so at any rate, I, it, that was, that was, that was, that was, that was a good outcome um that came from those discussions, so.
Thank you very much for doing it.
Yeah, of course. Uh, and then
I do have a couple more things.
Uh, okay, here we go.
Right, the first thing is, the, back on Lipsec, the uh, the committee did uh want to register their support of the Community Corrections Biennial Plan and Budget, and so they put together a letter, uh, which as the vice chair of that particular group, I'm, I submitted. The reason that I'm bringing that to your attention tonight is that in, this is in anticipation at our September third meeting, we're going to have Lieutenant Denny here, he's going to be presenting the, the budget and the program to the, the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah.
So be in anticipation of that. Uh, the other thing that I, I wanted to ask, uh, can I direct a question to our Director of Operations, is he still on?
No.
Okay. I'm done.
Okay. Well, thank you, uh, and yes, this is an annual, or sorry, biannual general uh discussion and agreement for Lipsec, so. Okay. Well, if there is nothing further, hearing nothing? Commissioner Coker, sure?
Okay, one more thing, oh, no, no.
Just kidding. Okay, uh, then we will adjourn this meeting at seven eleven on August nineteenth. Thank you all for coming.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.